First item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council? I'll go on to the communication since item number two. Request to adopt resolution number 09-014.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is just to set the hearing. As you know, we have an agreement to build a wastewater facility. And at this point in time, we want to solicit the proposals for the water district. We have talked about building this under the general fund of the city or one time under the sanitary district. They have a need for the water district to be able to take the water and handle the reclaimed water. The reclaimed water then will be used to be sold. That'll also preserve the groundwater. And so after a lot of discussion, we felt that this would be the best to follow this course of action. This doesn't make the decision at this point, but it actually sets the hearing so that the council can have input, ask questions, and take public input at that point. So this is the resolution that sets the hearing.
Air motion? Now have item number three. This discussion and possible action regarding the disposition of the GE power station.
I'm not, in this, this action here, the GE power station that we have been discussing, I'm gonna refer this to Andre, uh, refer this to Andre if it's okay with the mayor for the discussion on this item.
Mayor Cabralis, this is a proposal, I believe, that Inland is presenting to the council with respect to one of the potential options with respect to the GE power station known as Victorville Two. And Buck, would you like to commence when you do the presentation, or Mr. Barnett? Presentation of the council regarding this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to talk to you this afternoon about this very important subject. The, as you know, the Victorville Two power project is one that has been in development for some time. We're at a critical stage now where we would like to be able to sell the project to a qualified buyer, obtain the financing necessary to move forward. And we've been actively engaged in discussions with potential buyers now for over a year. And one of the potential buyers that has recently surfaced are, is a, is an opportunity that has been brought to us by representatives of a major Chinese utility, a mainland Chinese utility. We have learned that this is a utility called Wadien, which is one of the largest utilities in the world. It has some more than 50,000 megawatts of customers, which is more than the entire state of California. And this is a company that is very interested in the possibility of acquiring and building a power plant in the United States, especially in California. And so in the, in the interest of exploring all the options for being able to bring qualified buyers to the table for Victorville Two that could make this move forward, we have entered into some discussions with the representatives of this Chinese utility. We have two gentlemen from that organization here tonight. There's a company called Wa Guang that these two gentlemen are part of. And as I say, they are representing the Chinese company. They are in the process of putting together some documentation that would lead to a face-to-face get-together directly with the, some of the Chinese representatives in the near future to see if we could advance these discussions to the point where they could become real. And so I think against that backdrop, I would invite these gentlemen to come forward and explain to you directly what is contemplated in this proposed transaction. I think we have here Mr. June Lee and Mr. Walter Van Patten. And I'll only say that June Lee is someone that I have dealt with in the past. He's been involved in the High Desert Power Project on the environmental side. And so we had a prior relationship, and that's really what led to them contacting us to see if there was a fit with the Victorville Two project. So I'll turn this over to June Lee now, and he can make the further introductions.
Thank you, Tom. Again, my name is June Lee. I appear before you with my classmate and friend, partner, Walter Van Patten. As Tom mentioned, we represent a very large power company based in China called Huadian International and China Huadian Corporation. Huadian, since 2008, owns and operates a installed electric capacity of 63,000 megawatts and is one of the largest state-owned enterprises and utilities in China. Over the past 10 years, as you all may know, China has gone through a major growth spurt and with it, a significant energy development in both traditional energy coal-fired power plants, natural gas-fired power plants, as well as wind and renewable energy solar panel facilities. Through that experience, at this point, China's installed capacity is sufficient even for its over 1 billion people. And so they are very interested in exporting its expertise as well as its investments overseas. Back in November of 2008, I had a chance to meet with my old friend Walter in Shanghai, and we discussed a number of trade and business opportunities. And of course, the Victorville Two hybrid power project came up in our conversations. Fortunately, at that time, one of the representatives of Huadian was in attendance, and we talked in depth about the advantages of working within Victorville and investing in the United States, in particular, in the energy sector. You more than, most people know that Victorville is a very unique place. In fact, in, 10 years ago, in 1999, another classmate of ours and I co-authored a study for the High Desert Rita, which at that time was tasked with promoting Victorville and the, the High Desert area. 10 years later, the, the same conclusions still apply today. And that is Victorville is at a critical nexus of not only transportation, but also energy assets. It's, it's a place where it is very well-known that investments prosper and where the city council stewards business development. And just as importantly, a very nice place to live with a high quality of life. We discussed those attributes of Victorville. And through my knowledge and through my friendship with, with Tom Barnett and Buck Johns, I was privy to a number of details about the Victorville Two hybrid power project. And the proposition was compelling, not only compelling on its face, but also to Huadian in China and the, and to the Chinese political leadership. By virtue of AB 32, as you know, California is mandated to increase its renewable energy consumption. And by virtue of last year's executive order by Governor Schwarzenegger to increase that to about 35% of the total energy consumption in California. There is a lot of activity in the desert to meet that challenge, but none as mature and as ready for development as Victorville Two. Chinese are very astute business people. They are very, very wise and strategic in their investments. And you all ought to know that the Victorville Two power project leaped ahead of a long line of propositions that are constantly being proposed to the company. Even in our presentation in Beijing, we were not only there pitching Victorville and Victorville Two, but a number of other countries as well. There was a Cambodian room, there was a Southeast Asian room, there was an African room, and so forth. But because of the competitive advantages of Victorville and, and the regulatory environment that favors renewable energy and power development, and the, frankly, the stature of California as a leader in energy development, this particular project and our proposal to bring it forward to, to the city council left ahead of a whole host of competitors. So Huadian, at this point, proposes to invest in, and if necessary, be the sole investor in the $1.2 billion power project, beginning from the, the construction all the way to completion and operation. It has on its own, a, the financial wherewithal to do it. It also has the technical ability to do it because they are in fact power developers and they have a huge installed capacity. Huadian is, has the political strength to carry it forward within the People's Republic of China. And we are just starting the process for the past month, and most recently in the past week, in, in developing political support here in the United States. Unlike other major, high, high-profile investments, such as the World Dubai, World Ports Dubai fiasco and the previous attempts by a very large Chinese petroleum company to invest in Unical, Huadian wants to do it differently. Huadian is committed to working with the city council, the city manager, the, the people of Victorville and the surrounding area, to interface with the, the local political environment, but also to escalate what would be the largest hybrid power project in the world once it's built. And so we are tasked with not only making presentation to this, this council, but also to interface with, with the governor's office and in Washington DC so that there is a broad level of support for, for their significant investment. If it comes to pass that Huadian does invest in this power project, this will be their very first major investment in the United States. This would put Victorville not only on the US energy map, but on the world stage in power development. So it could be a very, very exciting opportunity. My partner Walter Van Patten is passing out a recent US Department of Treasury bulletin in which the former Secretary of Treasury, Treasury Paulson, entered into a 10-year strategic economic dialogue with the People's Republic of China. As part of that strategic economic dialogue, they forged a broad consensus, what, and a program called EcoPartnerships. As you'll see in, on page two or three of the handout from the Department of Treasury, Huadian Corporation was one of the signatories to the EcoPartnership commitment. And in brief, the EcoPartnership commitment was basically to identify strategic and, and high-profile renewable energy projects in which the Chinese would invest. We're hoping that, that the Victorville Two solar hybrid power project will be the very first one. And, and so at this point, to give you further background on, on how this, this development occurred and the internal processes within, in China, I'd like my partner Walter Van Patten to explain a little bit further. Walter and I graduated from Claremont McKenna College, and so we're, we're classmates. But for the past several years, he's lived in China, in fact lives in Shanghai today. Walter?
Yeah, hi. Just to give you a brief background, because I've been living in East Asia for the last 20 years, and basically my passion has been dealing with Chinese corporations and Chinese organizations. And because we were involved, as Huagong International, we were involved in a investment in a power plant by Huadian in Abu Dhabi, a 1,000-megawatt coal-fired power plant. So we've had this background in working with them to arrange for them to invest overseas. And because when June came to Shanghai, he mentioned at the time the Victorville project, so that's why we, I immediately said, well, what about, what could we do with it? And so we started the process before even contacting Inland Energy about this. We wanted to make sure that Huadian would be interested in the project. And because as of two years ago, the Chinese government, central government has had a policy directive to have the five major power developers in China to do overseas investment. Now, most of the projects that they've been involved in in this less developed world have, don't have the level of sophistication and the regulatory challenges that California brings to it. But because they have that experience overseas already, they wanted to also lift the benchmark, their, their own standards, and to try to tackle a US investment. Add to that, the past year, the financial tsunami has, saw a lot of Chinese policy-directed investments in the US go up in smoke because they, they invested heavily in Goldman Sachs, Citigroup, the Blackstone Group, et cetera. And a lot of these, of their investments went up in smoke. But because they're holding on to over a trillion dollars in our treasury bonds, they also are stakeholders in the strength of the US economy. So they're looking, the government at the highest levels is looking for ways to invest in hard assets in the United States. And the Victorville project is the only shovel-ready project here in California, and the best and most attractive in terms of, of its low carbon footprint in, in the entire United States. So it was a natural match. So in December, when we came back and we contacted Buck and, and Tom about this, we had already had the tacit agreement from Huadian. But we needed more information, which they readily provided and were very supportive to us, in, in order to get a letter of interest from Huadian, which we, on my last trip back to China, we have secured. Now, but before we hand over the letter of interest, which is addressed to your honor, Mayor Cabralis, we, we need to have our commission agreement secured with the city. And for the details, we, we believe that we issued the, the commission agreement to the city attorney. And we were hoping, in order for us to fast, fast-track the process, if you could, if you could review that, suggest your changes, or ratify it as soon as possible, then we can move to the next step. The next step, which will be a total review of all the due diligence information that is provided by the city and Inland Energy to the Chinese, for them to come up with a purchase agreement within one month of receiving all the due diligence information. That's our target. Now, in my own experience with Chinese companies of the size and scope of Huadian, I think that's a reasonable timeframe that they can accomplish, especially because of the, the own particular political and economic situation we are in right now, where it's a win-win situation for both the US and China for this type of project. And full government support on both ends for the approval of the investment, the tools that are now available in the US through the stimulus package, and also tools that are available in China through their own domestic stimulus package. Did you want?
Mayor, we, we realize that the entire council has not had the benefit of reviewing the proposed commission agreement. If I may, it's fairly straightforward. We are proposing to, for us, in our role, to pay for all of our expenses at no cost to the city at, at any time. We're also proposing a 10% commission, a finder's fee, based on the money actually received by the city. So for example, if the, the city's goal was to recover its $50 million deposit paid to GE for the power plant, and then charge a premium of, let's say hypothetically, $25 million, we would, we would take that $75 million that the city expects to receive back from, from the buyer, and then negotiate with our buyer to gross up the total purchase price to include our, our commission. That, that's basically our proposal. Again, we're, we're a little bit out of sequence from, from the normal process of transactions because we in fact have a letter of intent already in hand. And in fact, the representative of Huadian is supposed to get on the plane on Thursday and arrive this Thursday to start the political process. But again, I respect the fact that, that the city attorney has probably needs some more time to review it, to advise the council properly, and for the council to take it up for a vote.
If I could just add a few more words before we open it up to your comments or questions. We're very excited about this prospect. As you know, this is not the first foreign potential investor we have talked to. We have talked to others in the past, and we have several others in our list of potential buyers. And we find that sometimes the, some of these offshore companies are actually in the best shape when it comes to the ability to finance because they are cash-rich, as you, as you could say, and that's certainly the case with Wadien. Similarly, the, the process that we're going through, the documentation that we're talking about tonight, is typical of the kinds of transactions that we would enter into with other prospective buyers. We have already begun the process with Wadien by executing a confidentiality agreement that allows them access to the data. Walter and June and their company have already undertaken the translation of hundreds of pages of data into Chinese for review by the Wadien technicians in China. So this process is, has already begun, and they are clearly, as you've heard, very interested. I think I would point out that the, that the commission agreement that they described to you tonight, we've already explained that you all clearly need time to review this and get comfortable. We're, we would obviously like to proceed as quickly as possible, but at the same time, everyone needs to understand the documentation. I would add that the, the general framework that June Lee just described, it clearly is based on the same kind of sale concept that we've discussed with all of the potential buyers. And that is, there would be, for starters, a sale price that would include full reimbursement of all of the city's expenses. That, that includes the expenses on GE, that includes all the expenses to obtain the permit, the land, all of the other components. And then on top of that, what June was talking about is what we've been calling a development fee. And I think you all are familiar with that. That would be the fee that the city of Victorville would be paid to compensate you for the development risk you've already undertaken. So, and then they are talking about putting the commission fee on top of that. The fee itself would be rolled into that price so that the city, although the city would be paying it, the buyer would actually be calculating the purchase price on the, a purchase price that would include their commission fee. So the city would not be out any money. This would be basically what's called a gross-up, if you're familiar with that term. So, you know, Inland believes that the concept underlying this commission agreement makes sense. We, we believe that the letter of intent, which we saw drafts of, is a significant document. As June and Walter can tell you, for the Chinese government, utility to enter into a letter of intent is not something that is undertaken lightly. It is much more significant step than one that is taken sometimes in the US where letters of intent are sometimes handed around rather lightly. And so Buck and I were just in Washington DC yesterday, talking to government officials, the Department of Energy, and congressmen. We received a clear message that the United States is very interested in doing business with mainland China. The idea of, of being able to structure this kind of deal with a major Chinese utility is very appealing. We think that the government is, will endorse it. And so however, that's a process that would be one that needs to get underway. First step is the commission agreement, the letter of intent being delivered to you, Mr. Mayor. And then there would be further political discussions to make sure that everyone from the local officials up through the state and federal government are all comfortable with this. And so we're anxious to get this program going. Understand also very clearly that this is not an exclusive agreement in the sense that if this is undertaken, we are limited in any way in our ability to pursue other sales opportunities. This is an exclusive agreement with regard to the Chinese companies that Wa Guang represents, but it has no impact on our ability to pursue the discussions that we're already underway with on a number of other potential purchasers of the project. So with that, all of us would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question from Mr. Johnson?
I, I'll leave the indemnification question with Terry to do. I do have, I want to go back and touch on that exclusivity comment you just made because I was gonna bring that up as one of my questions. Obviously, you represent, you're exclusive representative of the Chinese corporation. We've got several parties, totally separate parties, and Tom Barnett said that your activities in our agreement would not impinge on them moving ahead in a timely fashion with these other entities. I want to hear that reaffirmed again from you.
Raul, that, that is correct. We are not proposing an exclusive relationship with the city. We understand that the city has its own priorities and requirements, and has in fact been in negotiations and discussions with a number of parties. The commission agreement, one of the exhibits identifies a discrete number of, I believe, four or five Chinese corporations, among which is Huadian, that, that we would claim for the purposes of, of our commission.
You said in the last two years, the policy is kind of, from mainland China's government has said, let's do more investments out, I assume, besides the United States, other parts of the world, but...
Power industry.
Oh, just for the power industry, that, that's all?
They've had a, in other, other areas of, for example, agricultural investment, oil, they started much earlier. But for power, the power industry, these five, what we, you might say are policy companies of China have had that directive.
With that kind of a short timeframe there, how much activity have you had with some of the more traditional Siemens, GE, those five folks? Have they, have you interacted with any of those other major corporations a lot, I mean the electrical in, in business, I mean?
For coal-fired, because a lot of the, within these last two years, a lot of the plants that they've invested overseas have been coal-fired, coal-fired plants. And so most of those are Chinese, they're Chinese turbines. But Huadian has long relationships with all of the, the major manufacturers, Siemens, APE.
You've imported some of that technology back into the, okay, that's what I was basically driving it.
Also, if I may, GE, which is the, the supplier of the major power components here for Victorville Two, also has a joint venture in China. It's a GE-China joint venture. So GE's corporate energy priorities is clearly focused on China. Huadian, being one of the largest energy producers and developers, invariably has a very strong relationship with GE.
One of your comments you made, what we made about a week or two ago, when you were here, the first... here, the first time, you mentioned that the company wanted to have at least 51 percent ownership, could be up, and you just alluded to up to 100 percent. What would be another partner if you weren't at 100 percent? What are you looking at?
The draft commission agreement that will ultimately be circulated has a total of about four or five power companies based in China. There's discussions in China now as to a consortium approach, or two or more combined with Huadien, or whether Huadien takes the major investment as 100 percent investor. That particular configuration of who will actually invest in Victorville II ultimately will have to be worked out based on the numbers and the value proposition of the investment.
Thank you.
Several questions, following up first on Councilman Rothschild's question. Would that consortium approach provide an opportunity for the city of Victorville through its municipality, Vemos, to possibly be a part of such a consortium?
That is a possibility. Chinese political instincts are quite advanced. They recognize the competitive advantage of having the city as a partner in the development, especially like a city like the city of Victorville. Their initial response to us was that they were interested in a joint venture with the city of Victorville. When we described possible budgetary limitations to do that, they indicated then they would think of other ways to fund the entire project. Again, Huadien 100 percent, or Huadien in conjunction with the other power developers in China. So they are open, Huadien is open to a joint venture or other relationship with the city.
Secondly, if I understood comments of both of you gentlemen, the concept that you're proposing here tonight does not cost the city of Victorville any money unless and until you bring to us one or more companies from China that's willing to buy the project and move forward.
That's correct, Councilman Caldwell. In fact, I'll go further. The commission would only be released from the proceeds of the close of escrow. And of course, at the close of escrow, the city will also be at the escrow table. So unless the city receives all the money that expects under a purchase agreement or joint venture agreement, there would be no payments by virtue of commission or reimbursement of expenses or costs.
I had the opportunity to preview the U.S. Department of Treasury press room release of December 4th, 2008, prior to tonight. I'm particularly intrigued with this eco-partnership concept between the Republic of China and the United States of America. And I note with great, and I don't want to go into the details, but I note with great interest that these U.S. and China eco-partnerships, one is in Denver, Colorado with Ford Motor Company, one in Greensburg, Kansas, not exactly sure what that one is focused on, other than it has something to do apparently with the patient communities, Tulane University, I'm going to skip over one, I'll come back to it, Wichita, Kansas, and the Floating Wind Farm Corporation of the United States, all, as I understand it, independent and standalone ventures, if you will, joint ventures or whatever you call them. But I'm particularly intrigued by the one with the port of Seattle marrying two of the world's largest seaports, although it's not a subject of your commission agreement and what we're talking here about today, where I have a very keen interest in the inland port concept. And at some point, separate from what we're discussing tonight, I'd like to have more dialogue with the eco-partnership between the port of Seattle and Dalian Port Corporation. And then lastly, I'll go back to the one that's highlighted in yellow, Energy Future Holdings Corporation, United States. Could you expand on that just a little bit? I think that has a direct tie to what we're talking about, and I appreciate your comments on that.
The partner with Huadien under the framework of eco-partnership is a hedge fund and investment fund managed by a New York City, a Wall Street investment firm, commonly known as KKR, Colbert Kravitz and Roberts. In fact, Kravitz and Roberts are also alums of our college, Claremont Mechanical College, just down the road. KKR, other than its infamy in being the lead investor in a leveraged buyout of RGR Novisco a number of years ago, has allocated a significant amount of investment funds for renewable energy. And so as part of the eco-partnership framework that Secretary Paulson last year developed, KKR and Huadien decided to forge a understanding and a relationship with, for future investments in renewable energy in the U.S. and abroad.
Mainly in clean.
Mainly in clean coal. Now, the eco-partnership framework is also important in that, just a daily reading of the newspaper in the past few years, most people would understand that China has not been on the right side of the carbon emissions pollution debate, especially under the Kyoto Protocol framework. Time and time again, China has been criticized for developing its economy through dirty energy, mainly coal-fired power plants. This particular investment pushed through the auspices of the eco-partnership framework would in fact allow China and the U.S. to declare a win-win investment. China would invest in the world's largest hybrid solar power plant in the world. And it would be timely, because in 2010, next year, the Kyoto Protocol will be revisited and renegotiated in Copenhagen. And so if China makes investment this year in Victorville II, they would then have the opportunity to showcase their renewable green investment in energy at Copenhagen. So from a political standpoint, it's very important. This kind of investment is more than dollars and cents. It bears on the diplomatic relationship of China with the U.S. and China with the other nations of the United Nations. So that is why in the discussions within the corporation, Huadien, the deliberations occurred not only among the business managers and the executives at the various highest level, but also brought in the political decision-makers of the country as a whole, because there are significant diplomatic implications as well, especially advantages in Huadien's investment in Victorville II. About two or three weeks ago, Secretary of State Clinton concluded her visit in China, and the very last day, she was photographed, and the photograph was broadcast throughout the world at a natural gas power plant in Beijing. And at that time, Secretary Clinton praised the Chinese for investing in a natural gas fire plant. That power plant was powered by the GE-China joint venture power station. And so, again, the Chinese investment is not only good business sense, but also has a very strong diplomatic element as well.
I think that the presentation and the information provided sounds intriguing. I appreciate your understanding of the council's need to review your agreement. I have not seen it yet. I cannot make a decision on any such agreement tonight. So I think it's important that we look at that, and then, and that also, before we move forward on anything, that this council be fully briefed on where we're at with GE, understanding certain timeframes and things like that. I think those two items are of the utmost importance. So I'd like to see the agreement. I know we have it somewhere, but it hasn't been provided to at least myself as of yet. And then also, just having this full council briefed on where we're at with GE is very important as well.
Senator, thank you, Councilman.
I just want to ask one short question. You said first there would be a letter of intent, and then it would take one month from that letter being accepted, that we would move forward on the whole process? Is that correct? Yes?
We want to fast-track it. With a month afterwards, there's a draft purchase agreement in place, and it would be a contingency agreement based upon approval by the, at the local state, local county, state, and federal level for this investment.
The other thing was, there would be no expense to the city at all as far as GE, the permits, the land, and any development fee that's been done so far?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Chair, do you have a comment?
Mayor and Council, the agreement that was submitted, I reviewed, marked it, and sent it to the attorney with some suggestive changes. We briefly discussed those. I don't know of other changes that the attorney had. They will be discussed with the council, and of course, the GE issue, which is potential litigation, if not, well, I'm not sure if it's potential at this point. I think it is because of the default notice. Needs to be discussed and briefed, and to some extent, while this is separate, it's tied to that. And so it's necessary to get a full explanation from these two gentlemen on their intent, but it's also necessary to get a briefing on legally what you may or may not do, and as it affects another instance where there may be, or there surely is, potential litigation. And I'm assuming that the agreement has either been typed at this point, it can be distributed to the council, or is prepared with the changes. I'd refer to the city attorney on that issue.
Manager, Mr. Cox, we're in the process of trying to get it into a form where it's ready to present to you. Just been, it's been going back and forth, putting some suggestions in, there were some provisions in there that we agreed to at this point. So we didn't want to present it to the council until we have it in a form ready to go, where we think it's at least going to be palatable to the council.
When do you think that will be?
Certainly within the next few days, I would think, distribute it.
I'm assuming that this dialogue here is not necessarily, could be, but not necessarily tied to the current GE generation stations that we have under consideration. The two are not integrally related. They might be, and they might not be, depending on timing and everything. Is that correct? Is that your assessment of your position?
Our understanding, right.
Okay.
I have a question. This is a private corporation that you're representing, or that is interfaced with the government?
No, the Huadien, the company we're representing, they are a government company.
Okay.
That was my question.
I might add, the major industrial groups in China are state-owned enterprises, government companies. The issuer of the letter of intent is a corporation based in Hong Kong that is wholly owned subsidiary of the state-owned enterprise. And that structure is important because that allows the state-owned enterprise to make foreign investments through Hong Kong.
I heard you say something a little bit back where it would not only require our approval, but then county approval, then state approval, and then federal approval?
That's correct, Councilmember. Again, the investment is beyond a purchase agreement between the city and Huadien. Because it's a foreign investment in a critical infrastructure such as energy, and because especially the potential investor is a state-owned enterprise, on the national level, there is a group called the Committee for Foreign Investments in the United States, commonly known as CFIUS. And CFIUS was created to screen and approve major foreign investments in the United States from foreign entities. The chairman of CFIUS is the Secretary of Treasury, right, the Secretary of the Treasury. On that board, or that committee of seven people, is the Treasury Secretary, the Secretary of Homeland Security, members of the White House, as well as the U.S. Trade Representative, and so forth. And so they screen the foreign investments to make sure that a foreign entity, and especially a foreign government, doesn't take over a national security asset of the United States. At the end of the Bush administration, Secretary Paulson's department promulgated new rules under CFIUS. And under those rules, there's an exemption from CFIUS for greenfield projects. And under the federal regs, the greenfield exemption applies for investments in projects that have not started construction, that are still in the planning stages. And so one of our strategies is to first develop political support locally, on the state level and nationally, but then obtain the exemption under CFIUS. Without that exemption, it would take a significant amount of time and energy for the U.S. government and the Committee for Foreign Investment in the U.S. to review and approve the investment. And I'll give you one example. When the Emirate of Dubai proposed to purchase the world ports, including ports here in the United States, they actually went through the CFIUS review, and they were in fact approved by the CFIUS committee. But they ran into a significant problem in the media, and the whole proposed investment went away because they leapfrogged one of the mandatory requirements under the federal regulations and statute, which is a mandatory 45-day investigation by the Department of Treasury and Homeland Security in cases where the foreign investor is related to a foreign government. And so while they were successful in obtaining the CFIUS review, their ultimate investment failed. The Chinese proposed investment in acquisition of Unical didn't even get that far. If you remember, a few years ago, they were planning to spend quite a bit of money to acquire the worldwide petroleum rights of the corporation, but because of the political backlash, they were unable to even finish their CFIUS review. They had to withdraw their offer. The Chinese and the U.S. is very sensitive to that kind of political backlash, and so it's our task, one of our tasks, to shepherd this proposed investment through the CFIUS gateways, and hopefully to obtain an exemption so that there is no time delay in the investment. And with respect to GE, we understand that if the GE power generators in the plant is part of the transaction that the city wants to sell, time is of the essence. And the buyer understands that. In fact, if GE, I would hazard to say, and this is my opinion, that if GE understood who the buyer was, there would be significant credibility and possibly some abatement in time and pressure for the city to act. Now, if the city's own financial requirements requires that the GE power plant be taken off the table, that's fine too, because again, Huadien has strong relationships with the GE-China joint venture, and it has its own relationship with... its own relationship with Siemens and other major power component developers as well. So we understand this is a very fluid environment, but from our standpoint, we're confident that we have a very, very motivated and qualified buyer. They are expert in energy development, they are well-financed, and they, being a state-owned enterprise, have the political muscle in China to make a significant investment here in the United States.
Sure, your eco-partnership, and that makes it, but it makes it more feasible to...
That's right. That diplomatic portal allows the Secretary of Treasury in the United States, and the Finance Minister, and the higher-ups in the...
Vice Premier.
The Vice Premier, and the People's Republic of China to talk about this transaction, and then to develop a political framework to support it.
Questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I guess it's as much of an assumption as it is a statement, but when the Unical issue was about, followed by the Dubai ports issue, world economy was booming, and the United States was not confronted with the collapse of Wall Street and trillions of dollars that have had to flow out of this country, I should say, the trillions of dollars of debt that other countries like China has graciously picked up. Looking at the CFIUS process for a minute, and the political climate, would you, would you suspect that there might be a far greater willingness, both on the part of China to get rid of some of the U.S. dollars, as well as the Department of Treasury interested in the inflow of those U.S. dollars back into the United States that could well help facilitate the expedited process that you're talking about?
Councilman Caldwell, you framed the strategy just right. There is incentive and motivation, and commonality of interests for the U.S. to accept and support a major Chinese investment, and for the Chinese to actually make the investment. Because after all, the Chinese currently hold over $2 trillion of U.S. Treasuries. And just today, I believe they bought about $50, $58 billion more. From a trade protectionist point of view, that may be a bad thing, but from a world economic view, it's actually a good thing that the U.S. economy is being supported. From a business and investment point of view, those U.S. Treasuries yield between 0% and maybe about 2%, 2.25%. The, as we understand it, the internal rate of returns for an investment in Victorville II would be significantly higher. So it's the same U.S. dollars being repatriated into the U.S., earning more income for the holders of those dollars.
One other quickie question, and it may be just more of an opinion than a fact of knowledge, but seems to me that these generators that we have at the moment would put you further up the timeline here of turning dirt, shovel to dirt, than having to get at the end of the line here. It's probably worth at least a year flip right there in itself, just that acquiring these versus getting back in line, going the project and getting the same generators again at a later date.
Yeah, I think Huadian understands that, and they would wholeheartedly agree. While the GE power, the availability of the power equipment is not a deal killer either way, there is an advantage of having the GE equipment ready to go. In fact, that encapsulates the advantage of the investment in Victorville II on the whole. Victorville II, by virtue of inland energy and the foresight of the city council, is the first mover. The city, the city's power certification occurred in July 2008 by the California Energy Commission. It's, and you were the first. Having the GE equipment, while perhaps a burden right now, is also an advantage, because it allows the investor to move forward quickly and with certainty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
As this moves forward. We have item number four, which is closed session. Andre?
Yeah, the item is fully agendized, and if there's reportable action from the closed session, we'll come out and report any reportable action.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, month to month. Well, it's going to be month to month. If they don't perform, and what they say, they're going to cover the conference.
Can't recommend six months, month to month I can, to see if they actually produce.
Month to month, and he's going to say that to us, so.
How pretty.
Is that on?
We should do it before he opens the meeting, right? Flashing before he opens the meeting.
Okay.
We have the CDBG funds. Did you get it written?
Yeah, they emailed it.
They emailed it?
I have a copy of it, but I don't know if it's in the agenda or not.
The city council has been in closed session, and there is a reportable action as a result of the closed session, which was part of the 5 o'clock agenda. That reportable action is that the city council unanimously agreed to approve a change order with the GE contract. It is change order number four. So there's a unanimous decision by this council to enter into and authorize Mayor Cabral to execute change order number four on the GE contract. That is the end of the reportable action for the 5 o'clock meeting.
Thank you.